You guys, if you're listening to me for a second, you may get some echoes. I think this is what happens when I go live. Then I gotta shut it down.
We can also turn off my lights during the recording.
Don't get complicated.
All right, look at that.
All set.
All set. Um, all right. Thank you, Ethan. Maybe you just want to start the meeting. We are live on YouTube.
Okay.
And then, and then I can maybe take it from there since this is just a workshop.
Sure, sounds good. Uh, welcome everybody to the February 18th. Meeting of the Planning Board, Camden Planning Board. Um, gonna just go ahead and open the meeting. Um, and quickly ask if we have any non-agenda items.
Nope.
Hearing none. Uh, we're going to move on to a discussion of a review of a zoning ordinance change and Jeremy and Chip are going to give us the details. Uh, so we'll start out with Jeremy. And he's going to sort of run the meeting from now going forward. It's just a workshop. And um, we'll listen. Hopefully you've all had a chance to review the documentation that's been sent around. And uh, we'll go from there. You have the floor, Jeremy.
Awesome. Thank you, Ethan. And um, just for everyone out there, we are on two, we're on Zoom, we're meeting on Zoom. Um, people can comment, the public can comment on the YouTube um, channel, Town's YouTube channel. Um, and also please send me emails or call me if you have any comments or questions about anything that we're discussing tonight. Um, that's for the public that's out there. So I'll just do a brief, um, brief scenario, I guess. So um, I had Chip Lake owns a property up on, um, I think it's 200 Camden Road. Whatever Belfast Road, sorry. And um, he's had some, his family's had some commercial businesses there and activity there for, for years. Um, and Chip is proposing a zoning ordinance amendment. He approached me about something he'd like to do, a project he'd like to do up on the property. Um, and there is a provision in the zoning ordinance for amendments petitioned by, um, you know, folks, property owners in Camden. Um, and Chip has, um, look again, looking to do something. So he's proposed a zoning ordinance amendment. I will say just before we get in there, I did review the comp plan and I'm sure you all read the comp plan very thoroughly. Um, prior to even this, um, I'm being a little facetious, but hopefully not. Um, just looking at touching on the comp plan, um, when you do zoning ordinance amendments, they need to be consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. And um, so what I did is I, it's fairly easy to use, especially on a PDF format. You can go into the comp plan and search things like coastal residential district. And it pops up every time the coastal residential district is discussed. Um, so I went through there and I, and I, and I did grab bits and pieces of the comp plan that I think support the planning board and the town looking at doing things differently in the coastal residential zone. We had a conversation while we were talking previously. Um, and I don't know if it's with the new board members or not, but the coastal residential zone um, is there are three coastal residential zones in town. Um, you know, the south end of um, town along the coast. Um, and then we have a stretch on High Street where this property lies. Um, that includes a Sherman Point area coming up to like Beloines and Chip's property here. Um, this side of the park. And then you have on the other side of the park, you have another such section of coastal residential zone. Certainly all three zones are different. Um, they're, they're not at all the same. And, and the ordinance or the comp plan does speak to that and it does speak to, um, you know, that, that we ought to look at these kinds of, um, kinds of things. If you look in the future land use section, it does, does talk about this. So I think it's important to recognize that and it does, it does say in zoning, the zoning ordinance section that the planning board should entertain zoning ordinance and subdivision changes suggested by citizens, local engineers, the code officer planner in a timely fashion to determine whether hearings should be held if the proposed change merits consideration. Um, and so you look at that combined with the, um, some of the doc information I provided you on the coastal residential and um, it certainly is, you know, right in your, um, you know, right up your alley to handle and to address and to, and to look at. Um, and I, I think there is some support for, um, looking at these kinds of changes in the coastal residential zone. Um, that said, I will plan on looking at the coastal residential districts. Um, holistically, uh, you, we've talked about that a lot lately. Um, there's a lot to look at, um, in our, in the town. Um, but certainly looking at what the comp plan suggests about looking at the three different CR districts separately and seeing if we should add some commercial uses or some other uses in the different districts is warranted. So I am going to continue doing that. But in the meantime, we have a, um, a property owner who has proposed something that he can't do currently. Um, and I'm going to probably hand it to Chip right now and, and Chip and I have chatted about some things. I'm just going to chip for now. I think it's probably just, we probably don't need to talk about the language that you have drafted. Um, I think it's more about the use and what you're proposing to do there because if everyone looks at the CR in our zoning ordinance, it allows, it's primarily a residential zone. Um, but if you look at it, it does allow commercial uses and it does allow expansion of industrial uses um, that are there. And so the commercial uses that it allows are things like construction, um, or boat maintenance and construction of boats. That is allowed in the zone. That's a permitted use. Um, and we just get to the exact terminology. It allows outdoor storage of boats provided screenings met. Um, and it allows indoor storage, maintenance and construction of boats on buildings, in buildings on lots, five acres or more. Um, provided that the storage facility within existence as of January 1, 2003, along with conditions about um, proximity to a residential lot line. Um, so it allows those commercial uses. It does allow private residential treatment facilities. That's one that you recently dealt with. That's the, um, you know, Fox Hill, um, expansion that you guys reviewed previously. Um, and it does allow storage within bars that were in existence. Um, and then you get to the commercial uses. For those that were involved in the, um, adult use cannabis piece, we did allow, um, tier one and tier two marijuana cultivation facilities. Um, and those are and outdoor allowing the CR um, as well as some expansions of motels that were already in place. So there's definitely commercial use activity, um, that does, is allowed in the zone. There's also industrial uses and the expansions of facilities used for storage and maintenance of construction equipment, which were in existence as of March 1985. Um, and that was specifically probably, um, addressing this property in particular, um, because there was an existing construction outfit that was in location and been there for years and years and years and years. And as you do the zoning ordinance, you try to pick those things up somehow make them legal or sometimes somehow grandfather them and then sometimes allow for expansions of some of those uses. So um, those are the commercial uses that are allowed in the zone, kind of wide open. Um, Chip, maybe you can go from there, explain what you're doing. And then I think I can kind of probably lead it from here, I think, um, in this case.
Right. I really appreciate it. Uh, well, thank you very much for having this workshop. Uh, as Jerry mentioned, I spoke to him some time ago about, uh, some different ideas I want to do up there. Uh, this is at 216 Belfast Road. Uh, 200 was my father's house. Uh, that has since been sold and the rest of the property is, uh, uh, it's in the coastal residential zone. There are two lots there. One is like 7.3 acres and the one down towards Route 1 is just about two acres. And the, the two buildings on the site right now in a, in a salt shed. The one building is, uh, was something my grandfather built back in the, the 40s and 50s. Uh, made out of the old CCC buildings up at the State Park. Uh, he used that for his construction, uh, company. Uh, he actually bought the property off the town. You know, when way back in, in, I'll say in the 40s or 50s. Uh, the second building is one that, uh, my father and I built. Uh, you know, for initially for our construction equipment and then, uh, we got it, uh, zone changed for allowing indoor storage of boats and then maintenance and construction of boats. Uh, what I want to do right now is I want to put addition on the back of this kind of a shed type addition. You know, the building is 120 feet long, 80 feet wide currently. I just want to put a, uh, a shed on the back about 50 feet long. So it would be total length of 120 by 50. But uh, I think I can currently do that under the, the, uh, special exception regulations uh, as expansion. But what I want to do is I want to make sure I can, if I do that, I can put boats in it and work on boats. I may have an opportunity to rent the whole building for construction and maintenance of boats, which has been great. We've had a lot of people up there working. We've had as many as, you know, eight or nine people a day up there working for the last several years. Uh, so it's a, it's a, it's a great facility and they've done a lot of nice work up there. But uh, so I'm just trying to figure out how I can do this and what kind of zone changes needed to, to make this happen. So any, any assistance, uh, you can give me, I'd appreciate.
All right. Thank you, Chip. So just so, just for kind of a process perspective, really quick, um, how this, how this works is and some of the members that have been here before understand it. Um, well, maybe they do. Um, it's challenging to keep, keep track of even for me. So, you know, we have to get to town vote and these things have to go through a process. They're required to have two public hearings, a public hearing before the planning board. And then it has a public hearing before the select board. And then, then there's actually after the select board public hearing, then the select board decides whether or not they're going to approve a warrant article with this language on it. There's like really a few pieces to this puzzle, um, that I'll need to play out. And if you're trying to get to town, June is where we're, we're trying to shoot for. I've talked about this in the past. It, it does take quite a long process to get there and that process is really dictated about when ballots need to be printed. Because we have to have those ballots to, for the most part, two months, go to printer, two months before the June town meeting. Um, and in order for that to happen, we have to have the hearings, uh, public information meeting, then the public hearing. Technically, you don't have to have a public informational meeting. There's no real reason not to. I, I mean, I think it's bad, bad policy not to engage the public as much as possible. Um, at least get it out there. So, but then you have a public hearing, um, and at which time everything gets discussed. So in order to make this happen, we have to have a public, uh, recommendation to the select board by March 23rd. Um, so that doesn't leave us much time. So if, if the board decides that this is worthwhile, um, and it's up to your, it's your perspective, um, you know, Chip is, is proposing something. It is not a town initiated um, zoning ordinance, though, like I started out with, I do think there's merit to looking at this and the comp plan definitely directs the planning board and myself to work on these types of changes, you know? Towns and communities evolve over time and your ordinance needs to evolve over time along with it, based on the needs and the desires of the community. So, so this is definitely a Chip Lake proposal. This is not my proposal. However, um, Shifted Chip did draft some language and I think, uh, I chatted with him today. The language doesn't really get to what Chip's looking for, um, because the way it's phrased in here is that the, is that it would be an expansion, the way, um, it would be an expansion of facilities used for storage and maintenance of construction equipment. And then, and then we added, and this is part my issue too. I mean, I, I worked on this a little bit with Chip on how to word this. But an expansion in indoor maintenance and construction of boats that were, which were legally in existence as of March 11th, 1985. Within lots of record existing of March 11th, 1985, subject to space and bulk standards. Um, we do that a lot in our zoning ordinance where we look at things and say, okay, it can only go in buildings that were here in 1985, nothing later, nothing past that. But you know, we do that a lot. Um, we talked, I talked about it earlier on the, the storage, um, you know, uh, piece, but the reality is, is the building that Chip is looking to, um, put this in is the building that was approved by the planning board in 1996. So, um, that doesn't work. So what really, and it's not really, we already allow, if he's looking for boat construction and maintenance, that is already allowed on the property as a, as a permitted use in a building that's in existent, in existence as of January 1st, 2003. Um, so really what he's looking to do is add on to that building, not on one that was there in 85. I think the only one remaining there in 85 chip is the small one on the right-hand side as you drive up.
Yes, that's correct. And this is a series of zoning amendments that were structured for specific piece. They weren't even concerned with that building when they, when they added the, uh, the commercial use for boat storage. So right, uh, you know, it's just the, the way the zoning ordinance has evolved.
Right. So, so what I would recommend, I mean, and then this is just how I'm going to approach it. And then I, I think the board would just, you know, have a discussion about it. Um, I would recommend actually that we actually not amend 10 of the special exception, but amend 11 to the special exception that allows for the expansion of commercial uses in number 10 that are in the commercial use section, number 10. So that he can do an expansion for indoor storage, bu- buildings that were there, leave that language in there that were there as of January 1, 2003. But allows for indoor expansion of those buildings that were there in 2003 for indoor storage, maintenance and construction of boats. I think that's probably the best way to do this. Um, I would also add, it may be worthwhile adding tradesmen shops to, um, this, this specific commercial use. Um, you know, I, I think if you, we look at tradesmen, we allow them in the RU2, there are standards, um, for them. Tradesmen are, you know, there's a whole host of, of folks are tradesmen out there. Electricians are tradesmen, plumbers are tradesmen, stone workers are tradesmen. Um, chimney sweeps are trained chain or are tradesmen. Um, it's a whole host of people. Generally small outfits. Um, and there's a need for them in the community and we do allow them. And what's the difference from my perspective? If you've got a, you know, a masonry contractor up there or you have a, you know, a plumber, an electrician up there. Um, while you have construction and maintenance of boats going on there, you probably have a scenario where a tradesman that actually is not the maintenance and construction of boats, but he does work in that field. Um, that would like a workshop. Um, and he's a tradesman, uh, but he so happens to also work on boats, who is part of his trade. So I think it's worthwhile to add that section, add tradesmen to this, to that section of commercial uses. And keep them not broadly allowed in the coastal residential. I mean, I think it's important to remember that this is very specific because it's on a site that has five acres or more. It's got to be in existence as of January 1, 2003. Um, so we're not talking of, you know, all of the coastal residential zone. So yes, I'll leave it to you. Um, feel free to ask me questions. I think one thing is important. I, from my perspective on, on a proposal like this from, from a property owner, especially where the coastal residential abuts the town property, which is the Sagamore Farm where we're looking to do a development at some point. It abuts other residential lots. Um, I think it's important probably to maybe look at limiting the size of expansions to these kinds of facilities. Um, you know, in a perfect world and a thriving economy and there is a demand for 50,000 square feet of space like this, that's, that'd be great. Not sure this is the right location for that. Um, so I think it's something to consider about limiting the size of expansions or the maximum square footage of, of a building like this. Um, outside of that, I'll, I'll let you guys have it, Ethan. Um, I would say in order to get something to the town vote, um, we can word, I can wordsmith just about anything. Um, but the process is we would likely have to, if everyone is in favor of something like this, what in the end tonight, what I would recommend is that you do schedule a public informational meeting on March 4th or whatever it is. And then a public hearings at the same time, set a public hearing for March 18th. Um, we can wordsmith this for the March 4th meeting. Um, hopefully there's no changes that ever would, you know, that need to be done based on public opinion or comments that we get. Um, and then we can go right to a public hearing on March 18th. Remember again, that there's multiple public comment periods on something like this. It's just not this public hearing with you. It's the public hearing, uh, with you, the select board, the approval of the warrant language, and then ultimate public hearing is the town vote in June. Um, so, you know, there's, there's plenty of opportunity for people to comment and have their voice heard on it. I would just say that, that that's probably the best scenario. Worst case scenario, we can have, we can at least agree on some language on the, um, 4th. If the language that is drafted prior to that isn't up to everyone's, you know, satisfaction or whatever, we could do that and do a public notice in the Kennebec Journal on March 5th or 6th, which provides us the adequate, um, notice time. Um, so just so everyone knows, all property abutters within, I think it's 500 feet, abutters and properties within 500 feet get notice of the property, uh, of the zoning amendment. So it's not like it just happens and property owners that are butters don't have any say or knowledge of this. They will get notice. Sound good? And I'm here, so ask questions.
So Jeremy.
Yes, sir.
I've been looking through this and I, I, I have a suggestion.
Okay.
That we, that we add tradesman shop as just, that's a whole separate issue. Add trades. And then if you look at this, it's got expansion of hotels and motels. All right, but it doesn't say, uh, hotels and motels are an accepted use. So if, if we're, if we just cleaned all that up and took the expansion of hotels and motels and the expansion of industrial and eliminated that, eliminate the word expansion from number seven. I'm probably just getting confused here.
Yeah, no, I hear where you're going.
But then under special exception, you have expansion of commercial uses and expansion of industrial uses and expansion of hotels and motels in existence.
Yeah, I mean.
Going there, I mean, and that would just kind of do an overall cleanup.
I, I totally see where you're going. Um, it's weird. We allow expansions of certain uses, but don't allow them. Um, I mean, really it's about special exceptions, right? Um, and so it, I, I see where you're going. Allow those uses, but if you're going to make them permitted uses, so they're not grandfathered. You know, allow them as permitted uses. And then if you want to do an expansion of them, go through the special exception process. That's where you're, that's what you're talking about. Correct, Mark?
Well, it, it is, but as far as hotels and motels, it's not allowing new hotels and motels. It's allowing the expansion of hotels and motels since March 1985.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you leave that, just put expansion in a, in a separate paragraph as a special exception. So permitted uses would be hotels and motels as of March 1985. And, uh, industrial uses, permitted uses would be storage and maintenance of construction equipment as of March 1985. And then a separate paragraph, uh, under special exceptions would be the expansion of hotels and motels. Um, the expansion of industrial uses and the expansion of commercial uses. So that covers all three of those categories.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I love it. Um, I mean, I think that's the way to do it. Um, and then at the same time, add tradesman shop as a commercial use?
Yes.
So here's a question. Um, tradesman shops in the RU2, we allow them. Um, we don't allow them in the VE, we allow them in the RU2, but we limit them to 2,000 square feet, as I recall. And do you think, I'm just thinking, Mark, just based on, you know, the comp plan does speak a lot, as much as the comp plan does desire, um, the town to look at the CR in multiple different ways and, and to maybe think about adding uses in certain zones and, or certain parts of it and not in others. You know, I, I think the comp plan also really respects the residential character of, and the, um, you know, of the CR. So I, I think limiting the tradesman shops to some of these existing commercial buildings like this and properties is probably warranted. Um, and I'm just throwing that out there. I, I would like to probably recommend throwing the tradesman shop into the commercial use section, um, along with the storage, storage of, storage and construction and maintenance of boats. Because I think from a, from an impact, the plant, this comp plan also talks about making sure to protect, you know, the residential character and, and those kinds of things. So I think how you, you know, do that is by allowing them, this would be in a similar type of, you know, the impact of a tradesman shop is not going to be more impactful than the impact of a, what he is allowed there currently um, on the property, right? I mean, you've got construction and maintenance already allowed in existing buildings. So adding tradesman shop to those existing buildings is not going to change much.
Um, right. But would, would you want to put tradesman shop under commercial uses or under, uh, special exceptions?
I'd want to keep, I'd want to put tradesman shops in with the number 10, commercial uses. Like just add, um, construction of boats, comma, tradesman shops in buildings. You following me along?
Uh, I am, but, uh, why not just add it as a separate line item?
Well, we could, but we're going to just have to again duplicate the, in, in buildings in existence as of January 1, 2003. Properties of five acres or more. I mean, that's the only reason. I mean, we're kind of, this is the one property I think that benefits from this one piece. Um, one zoning ordinance. I think there's probably some others in the neighborhood. Um, but that's my thought, but I, I like what you're doing about adding, adding existing hotels. Um, and, and you know, those industrial commercial uses as permitted uses. I mean, that's the way you should handle it and allow the expansions of those as a special exception. I like that a lot. Any, anyone else comments?
Hey Jeremy, I have a question. So I'm a, a little lost. The only document I had initially looked at was what you passed out on the agenda for today. So when Mark is going into these details, were you looking at the zoning plan for Camden?
Yeah. So, um, Pat, what I, what I was referencing, I also sent, um, this morning a PDF and I, and I did apologize for sending it so late. But that was some, some references from the comp plan. So Mark, Mark is referencing the zoning ordinance itself.
But that was also Jeremy, you sent that with the agenda, I believe.
I did, I did.
You get that, Pat, the second, the second, uh, document with the, uh, it's, it's in, it's in, um, Chip's, uh, application packet.
I saw his application, maybe, is it after? Maybe I didn't spell that.
The third, the third page is, um, has the section of the coastal residential district. So that's one easy way to find it or else you can find it in your booklet. So that's one easy way to find it, or else you can find it in your booklet.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
Mark is referencing, yeah, Mark is referencing those, those paragraphs from that, that latter part.
Oh, good, okay. Yeah, I see that, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, this is all for people that are watching, this is all in the zoning ordinance, it's article, article eight, section five, coastal residential zone. Um, and in there, just for the new folks and people that may be watching. There's a purpose, there's permitted uses, there's commercial uses that are allowed, there's marine uses that are allowed. Um, there, and when we say marine uses, we're just, that, that's. That is dealing with municipal boat ramps and municipal piers. Um, and then it allows some accessory activities, utility uses, and then we get into special exceptions. Special exceptions go to um, something like this, if, if this plays out for Chip. Um, and the future, you know, tenant over there. Any, any, this expansion would not only go to the planning board because of the size. It would also go to the zoning board of appeals and be reviewed, not under their appeal section, but under the special exception section. Where the zoning board really looks at, and Ethan can probably speak to it if he feels like he needs to. But they really are the ones, I think, that really address the immediate impacts on neighbors and like the impact on, on. On the community, as planning board does too, but you're, the planning board's review criteria is very specific. Um, and you know, you can only look at that criteria when you review something. The zoning board, um, it is, it is specific, but it is a little more um. The zoning board can put a lot more conditions on something than the planning board can. And so the zoning board would then make. Approve something with a condition of X, Y, and Z, say, and then things would go to the planning board and the special exception. That was just approved by the ZBA says, not, are you guys reviewing this? But you're also going to review and, and say okay to what we said that they needed, the zoning board said they needed to do to lessen the impact, if you will. Does that all make sense?
Yeah, it's, it's clear as mud. I mean, there's a lot of hoops, obviously, for these things to go through, and I think that's the important thing, is that there are checks and balances here. Um, and also just see, like, this whole process has to go from us to the select board, through public hearings, and then, you know, to a, a townwide vote. So there's a lot of um, you know, our, our, our decision today is, is really just to, to decide whether or not we're going to move forward. With coming up with the right kind of language. I do like Mark's suggestion, um, trying to clean up the amend, you know, the, the amendment so that it. Um, does more than just, you know, add one thing, but actually, and I'm, I'm in favor of the tradesman. Exception as well, adding that in there as a, as a commercial use. Um, interested to see if anybody else in the board has anything, any questions or input? Anita? I got you, Matt, next.
Um. So when we're, when we're thinking about uh this particular change, you've said that uh this applies only to Chip's um, the late property. Um. Would it be appropriate for us to then um mentally be thinking about this as um, as specific to the late property? You know, like when we're thinking about the impacts and, and that sort of thing, or is it? Is there any conceivable way that, that the. Uh permissions that we might be putting into place or changing? Um. Could apply in the future to other areas that we didn't anticipate?
Well, I think Jerry mentioned there may be other properties that it could apply to, but probably not too many. Um, is that right, Jeremy?
Yeah, and I haven't done this, I mean, you remember um. We're, and there's ways to do this, we do it all over the place. Uh, again, where we limit them to buildings that were in existence as of a certain time, on a certain number of acres. Um. Will this, I, I haven't done a, a review of every single CR property and every type of, you know, um. Every single CR property, right? There are more CR properties that have five acres. Um, but it's really, from my perspective, in this case, it's about an expansion of. Properties that had commercial, what we call commercial or industrial uses in existence currently. So, I mean, I think that's the way to handle it, is not to just, when we, when, if you do recommend, we. I drop some language for you. Um, it's really about um, for, about expanding existing commercial space, not fully allowing. You know, so down on the south end of town on the coast and the CR, um, over by Fox Hill, you're not going to get this because. Those aren't commercial, these types of commercial uses aren't there already, so.
Right, and nobody's gonna buy a five acre lot chopped off and put an industrial building there on the, on the coast.
I, I could see a lot of that on Sherman's point.
Yeah, that, that's where it's gonna happen, right? They're just gonna sell out their lots and, and put in a bunch of manufacturing facilities down there. Uh, Matt, you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, I, hi Ethan, hey Jeremy, nice to see you guys this evening. Um, now, in keeping with Mark, uh, or actually not in keeping with that, I would just. Put out there the idea of dividing this up uh into five B ten and five C ten as changes. So again, uh, Pat, without getting, having anyone glass or glaze over in any way. Um, in terms of commercials, so that would be dividing up the commercial use versus the expansion. And again, Mark, you touched on this, I'm just gonna go through it one more time. Um, you know, in terms of five, Jeremy, in terms of five B ten. And the commercial use. I mean, he seems to be in. Conformity with that, and you would want to, just to clarify, you would just want to add. Tradesman, or again, some language about tradesmen to five B ten, in terms of commercial use.
Correct.
Okay, so again, I just, I'm, I'm kind of looking down at Pat here on my little screen as well, just to clarify this. Um, again, so, um, because he is again, in conform, he's conforms to those standards of five B ten. Now, in terms of expansion, which would be five C ten. Moving down, um, here's where I would, again, following up with what you're saying, Jeremy, the idea of a size limit. In the language of five.
Can I, can I stop you for one sec?
Absolutely.
Um, and I think that's right, that's where you want to address the, the size piece.
Yep.
Ever, we actually need to create an eleven.
Okay.
Not change that ten, because the eleven, because ten would not allow him to do what he's looking to do. Because it has to be on a building that was in existence in nineteen eighty-five. And this building was built in nineteen ninety-six.
Even, that's what's so funny, because there's a contradiction then between two thousand and three and nineteen eighty-five. Now, let me just stick to that. What, what is our, um, is it in our purview to change the date? Not to oversimplify this.
Oh, it's all in your purview. I mean, it is, um.
I mean, not to oversimplify, but to change a two thousand and three or nineteen eighty-five to twenty twenty-one. Or nineteen ninety-six, where that.
So if you want to do that, then I think we end up down, going down the road, what Anita was saying.
Exactly, the one-off.
Would this allow elsewhere?
Right.
Because those are the building, every building's there in town, in the CR is ten eight, you know, it's two, one, so.
And doing it the way we're doing it, we're saying, okay, this building was in existence in two thousand and three. Now we're offering a special exception for the expansion of that building.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, so that moves us down to five C ten. Jeremy, I see the finger up, I'm, I'm with you.
Five C eleven.
Okay.
Leave five C ten alone. Go to five C, make a new five C eleven.
Right.
And five C eleven is going to say expansions of.
Yeah.
Outdoor storage of boats, we don't even have to do outdoor storage of boats. I don't know if you want to nix that or not, but we could say expansions of. Facilities or indoor storage, maintenance, construction of boats, tradesman shops in buildings. Right, as of two thousand and three. That makes sense?
With a square footage of whatever that canopy is for the tier of cannabis. So whatever that maximum canopy is with cannabis, what, I think that's ten thousand square feet, correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure that gets this, hold on, I don't think it does.
Well, I'm just, again, trying to be.
Exactly.
Apples for apples, if we're already allowing tier one and tier two for cannabis cultivation. Whatever Mr. Lake puts in there, you know, again, if we've authorized ten thousand square feet of canopy for indoor cultivation. It would make sense that the expansion would also be under that same guideline. Question?
Okay, so the existing building, I think, is nine thousand six square feet or so, if we're at one twenty by eighty.
Which is another six thousand feet.
So if you want to expand, allow an expansion of up to ten thousand square feet. Or do you want, is that what you're talking about? Because he's almost at ten thousand now.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying that the expansion would be up to ten thousand to be in compliance with what we authorized for canopy for tier uh, which is the large one, tier two, two.
Yes, we, we did the small tiers, we didn't go up to the big ones that the state allows, so.
Right.
Yeah. Um. I mean, that's an option. Chip, how big of a building were you looking at up there?
Six thousand square feet is what he said.
Yeah, six thousand, initially a six thousand square feet, but again, that's uh, you know, right now, it's uh, there's all kinds of opportunities. And even with the space and bulk standards, uh.
You're, you're regulated.
Yeah, we're regulated, we could do, do a little larger. Uh, it is a good, good sized piece of property. Uh, so, yeah, I mean, I'd rather not be constrained to that, but I understand uh where you're going with it.
Anita?
Yeah, um. I wondered whether we can. Um. Make requests relevant to the visibility from Mount Batty. Uh, in terms of um paint and perhaps um. Uh, any other kind of shielding, like. Bushes or whatever, and when the big warehouse went up and was, sorry, Mark?
That, that's where the special exception criteria come in.
Okay, so um, when the big, when the big warehouse went up, it was a very light color. And it um was extremely visible uh in the view from Mount Batty. And then um, Mr. Lake Senior very kindly painted it. Um, a green color, so in, in, in an effort to minimize that visual impact. And I do think that's important for um, for the overall. Appearance, because you certainly can't see it from the road, but, but you can from Mount Batty. Um, generally. Speaking, I think it's a fine idea to expand it, and it does. Uh, the way I see it, um, this location is a good commercial location. It provides um opportunity for. For additional jobs and work um in a location that, with the exception of the view from Mount Batty is. Um, a good location for that. So I, I generally favor that, the concept and um. The, I really favor the addition of tradespeople to that verbiage as well.
Um, maybe I can just comment, Mark, thanks for mentioning the special exceptions, and just for everyone, I'll go through those. Um, and so again, this gets reviewed, but not by you, this gets reviewed by the zoning board, and then it would go to you. As the planning board under site plan review, but the application, so the standards for a special exec, exception permit. Uh, the board, the zoning board may only gra, only in the event that the applicant is established to the satisfaction of the board. That need, A, neither the proposed use nor the proposed site upon which the use will be located is of such character that the use will have significant. Adverse impact upon the value or quiet possession of surrounding properties. Greater than would normally occur from such a use in the zoning district. In reaching a determination on this standard, the board shall uh consider the size of the proposed use compared with surrounding uses. The intensity of the proposed use, including the amount of type of traffic to be generated, hours of operation. Expansive pavement, similar measures of intensity of use compared with surrounding uses. The potential generation of noise, dust, odor, vibration, glare, smoke, litter, and other nuisances. Um, unusual physical characteristics of the site, including size of the lot, shape of the lot, topography. And soils which tend to aggravate adverse impacts upon surrounding properties. And then the degree to which landscaping, fencing, and other design elements have been incorporated to mitigate impacts on surrounding properties. So those are all, um, that's what the zoning views, and, and I have seen them, um. I haven't done a lot of zoning board meetings, but they have been very um. When it comes to these special exceptions, they've been very thoughtful.
Um, yeah, yeah, I can speak to that too, Jeremy, from my time on the zoning board, that. They go through the special exceptions with a fine toothed tone, and they're very considerate of all the impacts that are um possible. And will, will put as many conditions on there as they feel are necessary, and those are what are passed on to us for approval. So, um, you know, I think, you know, there is definitely something built in there, and thanks, Mark, for bringing that up also.
Yeah.
And, and just to help clarify things, when, when something comes before us, the planning board. Um, we have to follow performance standards. So it's difficult, we can ask a, a, an applicant to do certain things, but if it's not required in the performance standard. We can't insist they do it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy. And where the, the um.
EBA.
The zoning board can do that and make requests.
Right. Yeah, they can put a ton of conditions on things. Chip, you had a comment?
Yes, the only thing I wanted to respond to Anita about the, the stipulation about seeing it from Mount Batty. Uh, those, one of the things I, I want to do is put this into the special exception area, so that the town could, could talk about those things. We went down this road before, and I don't think we want to address that. You can see the whole town from the top of Mount Batty.
Right.
I mean, that would eliminate, I mean, people would have an opportunity to prevent anything built at the Tanrey site. Uh, the school site, you know, any place in town, you could almost stop because you could see it from the top of Mount Batty. Um, so, you know, that's one comment there, but, and yes, uh, as far as the size. Uh, that could also be addressed uh through the, the zoning board appeals process uh during the, the special exception.
So. Is, is anybody else from the board have any um? Questions or comments?
Uh, no, I think Pat Chen answered mine, Jeremy. Um, or asked my question, because I was kind of lost as well as to where Mark was, but uh, thank you for bringing that up. And um, the only question, I, I was trying to reconcile what, uh, how expansion is, if it's defined anywhere. Or, uh, you know, what are the, if there are any constraints on expansion, but I think that's kind of already been brought up, right?
Yeah, and so for me is, I mean, I've been interpreting zoning ordinances and administering them for, for twenty plus years, and I would um. If you have an existing facility and someone wants to put in addition to it, that's an expansion. I would not say the way this is, the way this is phrased. Um, it would not allow a separate, we would not be able to call an expansion on the property somewhere else. Like for him to put a ten thousand square foot building somewhere else, it's expansion of the facility, how this is, how this reads. Um, I'm not sure that's warranted in this case, I mean, it might be better have to do ten, two ten thousand square foot buildings. Um, rather than one twenty thousand. Um, but, but that's how you, you know, it's an expansion, is an expansion. If you're doing an addition onto an existing building, that's an expansion.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Anita? Uh, you're, you're still muted.
What's that? It, um, we, okay? So is the issue of um environmental care for the property with regard to the um. The various toxic substances that are used for boat um painting and other. Sanding, that sort of work, are those taken care of? Um, so, how are those taken care of in, in um adding this use?
Um, well, I would say, um. Um. You know, again, we're, the town regulates some things, not everything. I, I know we have a select board member concerned about lead paint on demolitions, um, rightfully so. Um, we don't regulate lead paint removal, we don't regulate how you dispose of it. Um, much like we don't regulate how a marine services boat contractor. Um much like we don't regulate how a marine services boat contractor manages their. Hazardous materials, i.e. paints, you know, whatever. We don't do that. The building code regulates some of that stuff. On what type of facility you have generally in to try to ensure um some air. Um pollution protection because of, you know, types of filters you may need depending on the type of facility you have. Um but OSHA and EPA and DEP regulate this stuff. Um. You know, so I would has it, I I would be hesitant to try to go down that road, Anita. But I understand your concern and I was just going to read through. The performance standards. This is where performance standards in our zoning ordinance supply, right? We have a section on environmental. It's about. Um soil and earth removal, stormwater, dust, fumes, vapors and gases. I know that comes up sometimes. Um you can't have uh with with boat outfits, you know, um the vapors and the fumes um and odors. That's about all we that we have when it comes to environmental performance standards in our zoning ordinance. Um outside of erosion control and stormwater and wetland stuff, but. Um I understand the concern. I I think I would leave that to um the operator. I mean, you know, the DEP regulates, they have air emission licenses. I'm not sure anything would be needed in this case, but I've seen other facilities that have air emissions licenses um that are regulated by DEP. The materials, the environmental stuff inside hazardous waste or or materials like paints and and the like. That's again, right, you know, we don't regulate that stuff. Um and you know, ocean, there are state and federal regulations that do. I don't want to get in the business frankly of trying to regulate that stuff. I don't know how to do that. I mean, it would be a a very cumbersome. Process to throw in our own regulations on top of state and federal environmental stuff when you're looking at that stuff.
Um so I understand, I I understand what you're saying and that certainly makes sense. But as I look to the future, especially for the Sagmo Farm property. That has not yet been decided, but it's getting closer to being decided and um one option is residential. So what I want to ask related to that is, let's say there are families living. Uh nearby and they be they decide that they're worried about the substances. The paints and the toxins that might be released. What action could they take? Um to just reassure themselves that everything's fine. Um would they call the DEP? And ask the DEP to please visit the site and see how they're doing? Or what would be that backup? Because I think it's something worthwhile to consider. Given that we have an opportunity to consider change of use.
Yeah.
Use and so we should look to the future of how.
It's a good, it's a good point. I will say in that in that performance standard, I'll I'll just read the whole thing. Um we often and you you know. Um we often say that things have to, you know, they're approved with a condition that they meet all federal and state permitting requirements. That's we always do. I mean, we do that often. That's the way to handle it. But this section on vapor. Um dust, fumes, vapors and gases says emission from dust, fly ash, fumes, vapors or gases which would could damage human health. Animals, vegetation or property or which could soil or stain persons or property at any point beyond the lot line of the commercial or industrial establishment. Creating that emission shall comply with all applicable federal and state regulations. So. Um you know.
Find that my question is what what would.
What would happen?
What what would a property owner um what process would they take to reassure themselves that everything is being?
Just like um just like things are done today. Um you know, we had an issue with. Smoke down from a restaurant, you know, downtown. Um and what happened is we reach out because we get complaints. Um in my office, um and I reach out because we don't regulate that stuff other than smoke. Um in the but we don't regulate the 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 type of emissions and how to how to actually mitigate that stuff. So in that case, I brought DEP in and DEP looked at their system. Everything was right. Um they provided some recommendations. So I would assume it would be the same exact way here, Anita. That call us, we'd get a complaint, we'd reach out to the entity operating the facility and we'd say, hey, we're getting concerns from neighbors. You guys got to make sure you're in compliance with all federal and state requirements and we're going to reach out to the DEP and and see if they can come come visit your site. That's what we would do. And I mean, we read to we do that right now. I mean, I've done that for years, so. Yeah. And in a state like Maine, being as small as we are, I will say they're generally pretty responsive. You know, if you were in the middle of Philadelphia or something, trying to get the DEP to your home would be not very easy. Matt?
Yeah, and Chip, I have a question in terms of um. Five B ten uh and the indoor storage maintenance instruction of boats and buildings. Um is that currently happening in the existing building in the current ninety six? Yeah, okay.
They built they built a couple of beautiful boats in there last couple of years. Uh and I've got uh. Many boats in there right now for storage.
And have there historically been issues with, again, to Anita's point, any again, issues uh in terms of environmental or?
None. Uh the main DEP does a very good job. Their their emissions folks, they've got some very strict regulations, especially with with boat builders. They have limits on the 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 amount of uh uh organic uh was it VOCs that that are permitted to to be uh put in the air. And uh it's very heavily regulated anyways, so uh those folks over in Augusta do a great job with that.
And as a point of clarification, um just back to Jeremy's point, we're really talking about the expansion of of an existing. Infrastructure and expansion of an existing system of construction that's already been there X number of years?
Yes.
Ninety six.
Yeah, ninety six is when we built the building. Uh it was built primarily for construction equipment. Uh and then uh uh I left the construction business uh here in Camden, went to work for another little company in the area. And uh and then it became advantageous to put boats in there. So that's when we went and did the amendment to the to the zoning. Uh originally, that was only for storage. And then I went back again a few years later, just a few years ago and get permission to put uh construction of boats.
Right, and that was two thousand sixteen as it's noted here.
And just a quick question. Um are you, I wasn't clear from early on, uh Chip, are you primarily dealing with one entity that you contract? To rent the space or do you have several different?
Right now, I I rent I rent by the the bay, different bays for different people. I've got a number of different people in there renting. Some of them are private individuals that have people work on their own boats.
Yeah.
So there there the different different situations. There again, it's that there may be some opportunities to do something to rent to one 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 person, one company. But uh you know, that's uh that's not a done deal.
In in your lease agreements with those folks, I presume that you have this sort of standard language about.
All environmental, yeah.
Which is pretty common in the.
Yep.
Boat world, whether it's individuals or businesses. So that kind of covers a lot of that issue too.
Okay, so do we feel like we've come to a a place where we can um move this forward? It does, I haven't heard a lot of objection to actually some sort of. Change. And so since this is just a workshop. Um we're really going to be looking back to Jeremy to provide the language in such a way that is the board is comfortable with. I see Mark is um not at his chair. Um. I wanna I wanna just sort of check with everybody and and you can just signify by this is not a formal vote or anything, but. Generally looking for a nod of approval to moving something forward that would allow this type of use. So I see Anita's got a thumbs up, Matt. He's in and Chris is in. I'm going to talk to, I'm going to check in with Andy and uh Pat as well. Andy? Yeah, and Pat feeling good, okay? Mr. Sigent dollar is back and he says, yeah, he's in too.
I was just sitting in front of the fire. I was still here.
I don't blame you. It's it's cold one out there. Um, okay, well, as long as you can hear us, then you're still participating. Um so uh Jeremy, do you feel like uh you have the 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 guidance you need already to go forward? Um I haven't heard any, I think Mark's suggestion in general was well received and. Um my take is that the board is generally in favor of. This type of change. It seems consistent with the use in the in the CR in particular uh to this property. Um so I guess the um. The thing to do then is as Jeremy suggested earlier, um put on the calendar a um. Does this have to be a formal proposal or do I just throw this out there?
Yeah, no, we need a a motion in a second to um schedule a public hearing from March eighteenth to um amend. Coastal potential, hold on, let me just get this right. To amend coastal residential um article, article thirteen, section five. Um B ten. B ten and add a new um. C eleven is really what we're getting at. Um and others as discussed, how's that? And that's the hotel. If you want me to, should I deal with the hotel thing as we're while we're doing this?
Yeah, Jeremy, you want you want me to just go through what I had suggested?
Sure, go ahead.
So.
And this is Mark's motion.
On B ten.
Are you making a motion?
Sure, yes.
Yeah, let's do it.
This is the motion of of how we we would like to word this, all right?
Yes, yeah.
On B ten. Uh start out with tradesman shop and outdoor storage of boats.
Yeah.
That's how we reword that paragraph. On C seven. You there, Jeremy?
Uh yeah, I'm here. I'm hold on.
So, okay.
I'm um. So okay, seven, go ahead.
C seven.
Yeah.
Eliminate expansion of. And on C ten, eliminate expansion of facilities used for the. And then. Number uh add number eleven. To say expansion of hotels and motels. Commercial uses and industrial uses.
Okay, um. Yeah, no, I'm I'm hearing you. I'm just, I'm trying to um. Trying to figure out how best to um. I understand exactly what you're looking to do, Mark. Um what I'm going to do now is maybe I can get a second on that. Um and then and then I'm with the with the understanding that I'm going to work with the town attorney on making sure that we. The language is exactly right.
And and Jeremy, before we accept that motion and Mark, hold on one, in terms of square footage.
Oh, right.
Where would you place that when you when we lump expansion now with hotels and motels?
Expansion of hotels, motels.
We across the board saying with a max.
And and. Commercial, commercial uses of ten thousand square feet or or unless something like that.
Yeah, something if that.
I got it.
Yeah, is that cricket?
Limited to.
Okay.
Ten thousand square feet or less.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, Chris gives a second and understood that this this can, this is a little bit fluid insofar as the language, um you know. And then uh we'll be we'll also be putting uh. Forward uh for a public informational meeting on March fourth.
Correct. So this language will be done well before that meeting, so we'll get that out as as best we can. Uh we'll send this to the abotters that we're going to have this special um workshop or discussion. Um and I'll um. And then um. If the language is perfect, that's great because then we don't need to do much much um rigmarole changing it. But if it's not, then I got to get the um. Which is fine, which not I I've got until like the day after to finalize the paperwork to the to the media, but. That's all good. That sounds like a plan. Um also on that date, we're going to have the public hearing on um. The MAP amendment for the wastewater treatment plant is going to be that day as well.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
For everyone's knowledge, the notices that were required to go out have gone out on that already. So.
Okay.
So Ethan, we there's a motion on the floor right now that's been seconded.
That's correct. We need to uh have the or vote on that motion. Thank you, Matt. We had a motion from Mark Sigenthaler. Uh Jeremy took that down regarding the public hearing and the language changed to article thirteen, section five. Um all in favor, please indicate by saying I or raising your hand. I see Anita, Crisso, Matt. And Mark, okay. I am also in favor. That's unanimous, five zero. Um that motion passes and we will have a public hearing on March the eighteenth. For that and before that, we will have a public informational meeting on March the fourth and that does not need a motion in a. In a. Second, et cetera, vote.
Gives us a smile.
Say again?
Is this where Chip gives us a smile?
Not quite yet.
Let's see, there it is, smiling thumbs up. He's still got a ways to go, but um this is the first hurdle and uh you know, Chip, thank you for your time and your presentation. And um I'm sure we'll see you at the next meeting. At the next two meetings and then you'll still have plenty of time to go in front of the select board and. And plead your case there as well, but hopefully with our recommendation.
Really appreciate all this, all the effort. Uh yes, uh I've been through this process before. Uh here and in other communities, so I'm I understand what's needed, so thank you.
Great. Yeah, thanks for your understanding of that. Um. And I guess that's really wrapping up our agenda tonight, if I'm not mistaken.
That is. On the agenda.
That is basically just also that reminder that Jeremy gave that the public hearing on March fourth will include a discussion. Of the zoning map amendment for the wastewater treatment plant. And that, as Jeremy says, has already been through the proper channels as far as notice. One thing I did want to raise, I should have raised it at non-agenda, it'll be really quick, hopefully. Is whether or not anybody on the board is already currently participating in the Tannery project discussion group. And whether anybody is interested in it, that's appropriate for someone on the board to be involved in that. Is anybody already participating or involved in that?
Can I just ask when you said?
I'm not participating, but I'm interested in it.
Can I, can I just ask, what do you mean by the discussion group?
Isn't there like a a committee or something that's?
Um so maybe I could just for everyone's, I I will just not really got kind of go into detail on this, Ethan, because this was not on the agenda.
Right.
But um the Tannery site on Washington Street, um it's a contaminated site. We have brownfields fund to clean up it. We don't have enough brownfield funds to clean up the entire site at all. Uh we're going to need a partner or take out additional funding to clean up that site. Um so we did an RFP, that RFP, um we had four responses to that RFP, a local um. Um group of folks, um not a formal group, but a local group of folks submitted a proposal to do Friends of Tannery Park, they're a kind of a park proposal there. And we had a housing outfit, um Northland and their consultant Dovetail who have worked with um on brownfield sites before. They submitted a proposal for um workforce housing, Crane Sport, a local entity, Mike Mullins and his project. Um he proposed what he's calling an industrial eco park there. And then we have um which would provide kind of maker spaces along as along. Um is in addition to a farmer market building um that he would, I think, leased for, I don't know what, to the farmer's market folks. And then um then we have a proposal for Habitat for Humanity to um use the front portion of the property for two or three house lots. We had the Town's Community Economic Development Committee review all those proposals. The select board had that um gave them with that charge. Um that charge to them anyway, and um they they reviewed them. They spent a lot of time on it over the course of a month. Um provided a lot of questions, comments. They they reviewed them. They spent a lot of time on it over the course of a month, provided a lot of questions, comments on it. The select board just this past Tuesday had a workshop where the four entities that made a proposal did a little kind of very brief. Try to tried to respond to the question. They were kind of directed to respond to the questions and the concerns that CDAC had reviewed. So we have four proposals. They're in the process of being reviewed. There is no, no additional committee or group or work, you know, and entity looking at those. Now what's happening is if we're encouraging people to to check the town's website out, there's a section Tannery Information Center. We have it called. We have all the environmental documents there. We have the proposals that were submitted. We have CDAC's work all there. And we're urging people to review that stuff and submit comments to the town. And we're going to continue this to be an open process. We have a federal grant again, $200,000. There's $170,000 left. On it. It requires a lot of, this has taken a long time since we've gotten that grant. When you take so long, those the costs. You start eating into the funds because of reports that are due and. Additional testing and work that's been going on, so. You know, we're going to need some figure out how to make this work, but so that is. It's happening. It's in process. The select board, I think, is hoping to have another session, a public workshop session in the next couple of weeks. I think they're going to discuss. The what they're going to do next week, at least on scheduling future meetings on it. I think it's important for the community to be engaged and completely understand all of the implications to. The proposals that's been submitted and. Understand the environmental concerns that need to be addressed. That's critical because it is a brownfield site. We have to clean the site up. And. You know, it's a lot more money than every anyone can ever imagine. So. Just keep that in mind. That's where we are, Ethan, with that. And hopefully that. At least. Gets you to where.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure if I may have spoken on a turn. I'm not sure, but I I think I just recall reading something about, maybe it was just a public workshop that I that I saw referenced in the paper.
Yeah.
And I just don't know if it's appropriate for the planning board to be tapped into that or or.
Okay.
People should just be be members of citizens or whatever, but.
Good point. I will say in a couple of them, at least two of the proposals. Would need zoning amendments. And so as I as how how this thing will work or it will play out. The town can't do anything until it goes to voters. The select board is going to decide how they're going to put something to voters on this. That'll play out in the next couple of months. But it will have to go to voters for June, at which point, once something gets approved by voters, then we're going to have to work fairly quickly. This project was supposed to be cleaned up. The property was supposed to be cleaned up by September 31st, 2021. That's not going to happen. DEPA has given me a six month extension and now they said we're going to get a year extension. So that's great, but every extension means there's more administrative cost that just gets, you know, drained. And that's not my administrative cost, my cost share to the town or to this project. It's actual dollars that our consultants are spending.
Yeah.
So but there there's two projects, the the residential project, the workforce housing project, which is anywhere from 35 to 50 units. And that is going to be, they're going to need some zoning amendments to address parking requirements. You know, our parking is very. You know, we love pavement here in Camden because we say every use has to have two parking spaces. Generally per square foot and or one per square foot. Residentials need two per dwelling unit, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of parking that they're going to have to address and uses in the BR. Are limited to on the first floor must be commercial. So Habitat for Humanity project, they don't, we don't currently allow residential on the first floor in that zone. So that would need to get addressed and again, the housing project, we would need to address that issue as well. Or any ordinance, so likely that will all play out after June, immediately after June, hopefully for November. So we can get something to vote voters and get a project underway. And and get the cleanup finalized. And then make a special town meeting. I don't know, but.
Yeah, so it sounds like there's going to be probably ample opportunity for the planning board to chime in on some of this anyway. I would, I would not discourage any members who are interested to attend the public workshop. If that's something you're interested in.
And read and read the information that's on the town's website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Jeremy, for that. And I'm sorry, I shanghaied the meeting here. Go ahead, Anita.
Sorry, Ethan, I just wanted to mention or put in a request to Jeremy. Both my husband and I were very involved in the town and pretty familiar with. How to find information, had a lot of trouble finding the information regarding Tannery. On the town website and it didn't occur to us to scroll down on the homepage and look for news. So I wonder if you could review where the appropriate place, double up on how you link to it because. That was not intuitive. In fact, the only way we found it was to Google. What we were looking for.
Ah, all right, I will. I will talk to Janice on that. No problem. Thanks for that. I mean, we want it up front so people can see it.
Right, I I get it in retrospect, but it it, you know, when we were actually went to look for it, it wasn't working for us.
Yeah, all right, perfect.
All right, great. Well, I want to thank everybody. For your work tonight and your attention to this project. Jeremy, thank you and look forward to seeing what you have for us. On March 4th. And with that, I will go ahead and disclose the meeting. Does that need any kind of formal procedure? I don't think it does.
We're good.
The workshop.
Okay, we're all set. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks.
Bye now.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, Chip, bye, Pat. Andy? Mark, Matt, everyone's going. Thank you.